The time is six o'clock PM. I'd like to call to order this special closed session meeting for the City Council and the management of Emeryville Services Authority for today, Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023. The time is six o'clock PM. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. Members of the public are invited to join us here at the Emeryville Civic Center, 1333 Park Avenue, or you may join us using the Zoom link provided for in today's agenda. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to give comment at the meetings throughout tonight's agendas. This time I'll ask if the clerk would please take the rule.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Mora?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Here.
And Mayor Bauders?
Here. Are there any ex parte communications for members to report this evening for items on the closed session agenda? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment for non-agenda items and the closed session items. Are there any members of the public wishing to provide comment on tonight's agenda? Seeing no members present and no hands raised online, Madam Clerk, do we receive any written comments?
No, Mayor.
Public comment is closed. The agenda has items five and six on it for the closed session. Madam Clerk, the time is 6:01.
The time is seven twenty nine and we're back for
Reporting in progress.
The time is seven
The time is seven twenty-nine. We're back from the closed session. I would like to ask if City Attorney John Kennedy would please report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were no reportable actions taken in closed session today.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. The time is seven thirty. This meeting is adjourned. The time is seven thirty. I call to order the City of Emeryville sitting as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to participate in our meeting can join us at Emeryville City Hall located at thirteen thirty-three Park Avenue or by participating using the Zoom link provided for in today's agenda. Public comment will be taken for each agenda item as well as for non-agenda items throughout the course of this meeting. And you can submit your comments either in person, remotely, or using an electronic speaker card provided for on the city's website. This time, I'll ask if the clerk would take the role.
Councilmember Carr?
President.
Councilmember Mora?
President.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Here.
And Mayor Bauders?
Here. All members being present now, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval of the final agenda.
Aye, second.
Thank you. Motion by Vice Mayor Welch, second by Councilmember Mora to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Now is the time for public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda within the scope of the Redevelopment Agency. Are there any members present who wish to comment on the redevelopment see agenda? Okay, we have one hand raised online. Please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes. Good evening.
Okay, two items. One is you're starting, you are starting this meeting fifteen minutes late, coming back from closed session. That's very rude and disrespectful to the people. A lot of us have like, you know, our evenings planned, a lot of us with family members, especially with those of us with children, minor children are, you know, need to plan our evenings and to start fifteen minutes late is very disrespectful. This was done by choice. You need to start your, your special closed session meetings earlier rather than take, have us sit and wait like you did tonight. It's rude. That was the mayor's decision to do that. And then the next item is the mayor has limited his public speaking time to two minutes. And it used to be five minutes years ago, and then it was lowered to three minutes, and that's kind of where it's been for more than a decade now. Another minute has been shaved off by Mayor, Mayor Bauders. I don't know how, why, or how that serves democracy. How are we, the people of Emeryville, served by unilaterally shutting down our, their time to be able to, to redress the, our government? How is that in our interests? And I can see how it's in your interest because you want to, you know, get to bed early or whatever. You have things you want to do in the evening, but I don't see how it's in our interest. And I'd like the mayor, the borough act permits the mayor to respond to this. If you could just tell us why you shaved another minute off and how that helps, helps the people of the city of Emeryville, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you for your public comment. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment for the Redevelopment Agency? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. We'll turn to the consent calendar. Members, item six point one and six point two are before you on consent. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Aye, second.
Thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Mora to approve items six one and six two. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Madam Clerk, the time is seven thirty-three. This meeting is adjourned. The time is seven thirty-three. I call to order this city council meeting for today, Tuesday, October third, two thousand twenty-three. The prior announcements related to hybrid format and location, as well as how to make public comment, are noted in the record. Madam Clerk, please note that all members remain present for this meeting. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move approval of the final agenda.
Aye, second.
Thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Mora to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Item four, special orders of the day. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville proclaiming October two thousand twenty-three as National Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas the City of Emeryville strongly supports National Arts and Humanities Month, the largest annual celebration for the arts and humanities in the nation for three decades, which is recognized by the White House, Congress, cities, counties, and states throughout the United States. And whereas the City of Emeryville celebrates the arts and humanities and believes they are essential to every sector of our community and across all levels of government. And whereas the arts and humanities support the diverse communities in our city and county, explore their history and culture, and enhance and enrich the lives of everyone in our region. And whereas the businesses that support and engage with the arts and humanities are among the most vital and successful in our region, supporting our local economy while creating jobs, opportunities for professional advancement, and personal growth. And whereas the City of Emeryville is a strong supporter of the arts and humanities, celebrating the thirty-third year of the Emeryville Art in Public Places Program, the sixth year of the Emeryville Rotten City Cultural Arts District designation from the California Arts Council, and the thirty-seventh year of the annual Emeryville Art Exhibition. And whereas the Emeryville Art Exhibition will take place this Friday, October sixth, I'm sorry, the gala will take place this Friday, October sixth, and the event itself, October seventh through twenty-ninth of this year, at the Public Market Emeryville. And whereas the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts works in partnership with the Alameda County Arts Commission to support the arts and humanities in Emeryville and throughout Alameda County. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor does hereby proclaim October two thousand twenty-three as National Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Emeryville and encourages all community members to engage in the many opportunities here within our city during this month, as well as you're around, and to participate in the culture and community that they help create, proclaimed on this third day of October two thousand twenty-three by the mayor of Emeryville. And I would like to invite Sharon Wiltshire to come up and receive, receive this, but before I do, I know you'd like to give an announcement related to the celebration of the arts, probably.
I have miles to go before I sleep tonight, but I did want to come this evening and just thank you, Mayor Bauders, and thank you, City Council members, for this acknowledgement of National Arts and Humanities Month. Sorry, okay. And as a city of arts and innovation, it just seems like a natural. You mentioned Art in Public Places Program, Rotten City Emeryville Cultural District, and Emeryville Celebration of the Arts, and it just happens that I've been involved with each of those since, since day one. But I honestly feel that right now, I just seem to sense a renewed energy in our city for the importance of the arts. And I, I think that, you know, for our health on every level, including economic. So of course, I invite you, everyone, to come to the exhibition during the month of October, which opens on this Friday. And it's the largest show we've ever had. There are a hundred and twenty-six artists, a hundred and eighty works of art, and almost forty of the artists are new this year. So that's really exciting to me. I mean, and over the course of the month, we will host an Annie Yates field trip to Nancy Carpen dancers at the exhibition. We'll have a poetry workshop, also poetry reading. We will, I already have several groups that are coming that we will host. And also, I know from last year, several thousand people, we had three thousand visitors last year to the exhibition. So I, but in addition to this, I, and you, it was mentioned in the proclamation, just really want to encourage everyone who lives or works here in Emeryville to look for some new activities this year with the Cultural Arts District. We're very excited that we've actually gotten funding from the state of California, and we're in the planning process for that. And also, just to get out and take a walk, take a public art walk. For such a geograph, geographically small city, our collection is phenomenal, and it's only growing, and we'll see that in our new city park coming up later this month. And I, lastly, and I want to make sure I, I get this right, because every month, Amber Evans and I attend an Alameda County and city-level partnership networking group. And I have to say that the Alameda County Arts Commission staff is advocating twenty-four-seven for arts organizations and artists in the county, and also offering support to them. So, and that extends to Sacramento. I mean, they're really quite an amazing staff. So once again, thank you so very much, and I look forward to seeing all of you on Friday night.
I look forward to seeing everybody on Friday night as well, and if
That's right.
you come out, come find me at the bar. I have hosted the bar for eight years now, so.
Did you see that I left, I left the program, the volunteers on your desk?
Yes, I have, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, no worries.
Thank you. This is not for me, it's for
I know, I know, it's for them.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks, you're welcome.
Thank you, all of you. Thanks.
Okay, we'll turn to item five, which is announcements on commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. As you know, we're in the middle of advisory body recruitment. The recruitment is open through the sixteenth of October. Applications available online. We have nine openings across the Budget Advisory Committee, Commission on Aging Housing Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, and then we added a new one for the Public Art Committee because we had a resignation on, on that committee. So we've received five applications so far, hoping to get a few more in before the deadline on the sixteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members wishing to give special announcements related to meetings that they have attended? Anyone over here? Anyone over here? Okay, seeing none, the city managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things to remind folks of. First, October fourteenth, from twelve to three, we're having a Pumpkins in the Pool event that the Community Services Department is hosting. So put your swimsuit on and come check out the floating pumpkin patch. Jump in and grab a pumpkin. That'll be a fun event. You're all invited. And then, secondly, October twenty-eighth is our Harvest Festival and the park dedication for the new Hu Chyun Park. I think that's how you pronounce it. It's going to be a great event. Cannot wait. Thank you, Community Services, for all your work. Just want to remind folks that that is coming up rapidly. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item eight is ex parte communications. Members, are there any items on this agenda for which you've had an ex parte communication that you'd like to report to the public? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll turn to public comment for the consent agenda and items that are not on tonight's agenda. Members of the public who wish to give comment for an item not on this agenda or on the consent agenda will have two minutes to do so. Is there anyone present here who wishes to give comment tonight? And there's no hands, there's one hand raised online. Please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
Hello. So I'm going to speak for my two minutes about our newest council member, Sukdeep Carr, who ran for council and lost, and then was appointed. But when she was running, she told her, her people of Emeryville that she would be a practitioner of good government. And he did lose the election. However, she was, as we all know, she was appointed. So I'm still holding her to the good government promise. And so what is decidedly not good government is somebody that's on a, an elected, you know, government official, that's somebody that's elected, to, to not be transparent or accountable, or have zero accessibility, especially in a town the size of Emeryville. And I'm here to report that Sukdeep has gone back, back on her word to be good, to be a practitioner of good government. Well, I have, I have put in seventeen calls, emails, and texts to Sukdeep asking her various things as a constituent, but also as a reporter for the Emeryville Tattler. And she doesn't, she, she's never responded even once. She's changed her number, her personal number that I used to talk to her before she was sworn in, but on the day that she was sworn in, she took that number away, and she is, does not believe in accountability or transparency or accessibility constituents. Not here to listen to us, the people of the City of Emeryville. And she takes her cue from Mayor Bauders, who also is not here to, to be accessible, and also Vice Mayor Courtney Welsh. The three of, the three of them are refused to, to be accountable and refused to be accessible to the people of the City of Emeryville. And that's really a shame. So you can't call that democratic. That's, that is decidedly anti-democratic.
Thank you for your comment.
Very, it's a shame.
Okay, now we'll turn to the consent calendar. Items ten point one through ten point seven are here for consent. Are there any members who wish to pull an item or discuss an item further? Seeing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Aye, second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Mora to approve items ten point one through ten point seven. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye. Those items are approved. There are no public hearings this evening. Item twelve is our action items. Twelve point one is a presentation on the annual report from the Alameda County Fire Department. Good evening and welcome. Welcome, Chief McDonald.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Bauders, members of the Emeryville City Council, good evening.
Could you pull that mic up so the people at home can hear you? There you go.
Sir, thank you. Mayor Bauders, members of the Emeryville City Council, good evening. I'm Willie McDonald. I'm the Alameda County Fire Chief. It's a great honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to present to you tonight, and I want to thank you very much for the invitation. Next slide, please. I'd like to present an overview of the operations and the services and the program here in the City of Emeryville, present the staffing and the recent incident activity of two, two thousand twenty-two, provide an overview of the Alameda County Fire Department, the resources and the programs, and present our strategic plan to the Emeryville City Council. Next slide, please. This is Emeryville Fire Station number thirty-four located at twenty-three thirty-three Powell Street. It has Engine thirty-four assigned there as well as Rescue Boat thirty-four. On the engine is staffed with a fire captain, an engineer, and a firefighter paramedic, and they can provide advanced life support services on every call that they respond to. They responded to a total of thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-nine calls for service in two thousand twenty-two. Fifty-three of those calls were reported fires and six hundred and seven medical aid incidents. Next slide, please. Fire Station number thirty, Emeryville Fire Station number thirty-five located at sixty-three-oh-three Hollis Street. Engine thirty-five assigned at Station thirty-five, a fire captain, engineer, firefighter, paramedic, and as well advanced life support capabilities on every call. Engine thirty-five responded to seventeen-hundred-and-seventy total calls for service in two thousand twenty-two. Thirty-eight of those were fire calls and nine hundred and seventy-five medical aid responses. Next slide, please. So overall, in two thousand twenty-two, Emeryville Fire Company's responded to twenty-five-hundred-and-forty-six calls for service in the city. Of those reported fires, reported fires in the City of Emeryville for two thousand twenty-two was seventy-one. Medical aid incidents, fifteen-hundred-and-eighteen. Approximately sixty, sixty percent of the calls for service, and as I say, both companies provide advanced life support services. Next slide, please. Let's ask Ms. Richardson if she would be able to play the video that we produced. Next slide, please. Let's ask Ms. Richardson if she would be able to play the video that we produced.
Manly.
Chief.
Manly.
Chief.
Manly.
Goes without saying that we are very proud to have the opportunity to serve the residents and the communities in the City of Emeryville, and we really honor the opportunity to be able to serve here in Emeryville since two thousand twelve. Next slide, please. Alameda County is five hundred and forty-five very hardworking, very dedicated men and women that serve out of twenty-seven fire stations across Alameda County. We've got twenty-seven fire engines, seven trucks, heavy rescue and a hazardous materials response, and a hundred and eighty-six million dollar budget, and we also provide the services of Alameda County regional emergency communication center, which serves not only the Alameda County communities, but also the cities of Livermore, Pleasanton, Fremont, and the City of Alameda in terms of services. We also provide dispatching services or priority medical dispatch services for Alameda County EMS agency as well as dispatching all of the ambulances in Alameda County. And we also have a full service of Fleet Maintenance and Repair Division. We have a hundred and six firefighters on duty each day throughout Alameda County, and all of them are capable of providing a wide range of services throughout all of our communities. Next slide, please. These areas, the shaded areas, are the areas that we serve. We serve all the way north in the county, all the way here to Emeryville, out east to the county line, and further down south, Newark and Union City. About five hundred and eight square miles and a population of about four hundred thousand. Next slide, please. We responded to forty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty emergency calls for service in two thousand twenty-two, extinguished thirteen hundred fires. About seventy percent of our calls were medical aid responses. Our response time was about five minutes and fifty-nine seconds. We provided ninety-two hundred building inspections and thirteen hundred plan reviews. Next slide, please. We have a full service hazardous materials response team. It's state-certified Type One hazardous materials response. That's the highest level of certification based on capabilities, equipment, and monitoring devices. Next slide, please. They're capable of detection, monitoring, hazard identification, confinement, fully encapsulated entry, and decontamination. Next slide, please. We have a Type One technical rescue team, again certified by the State of California at the highest level of certification, capable of confined space, high angle rope rescue, and entrapment. Next slide. Next slide, please. We have a water rescue team assigned here in Emeryville at the Emeryville Fire Station Thirty-four and also in San Leandro Fire Stations that provide services to the Port of Oakland, the airport, Oakland Airport, and the San Francisco Bay. Next slide, please. And we have wildland resources. We have smaller, lighter, four-wheel-drive fire engines that are capable of pumping and pumping water and driving at the same time. We have water tenders, we have bulldozers, and as well, we just stood up what's known as a fuel mitigation crew through the support of a grant that we received, and that's a crew that can go out and do fuel mitigation to prevent wildland fires and actually respond to wildland fires as well to help with the extinguishing efforts. Next slide, please. And the main reason that I was here tonight, though, was to present to you our strategic business plan. We developed our business plan in conjunction with, in partnership, really, with Alameda County Fire Fighters Local Fifty-Five. It actually celebrates our thirtieth year, thirty years as a fire department. I brought some challenge coins for all of you. I placed them at your spaces there. It just commemorates the dedication and the service and commitment that we've been able to provide for the thirty-year period that we've been in existence, and we're very proud to be able to present our strategic plan. As I say, we partnered with Local Fifty-Five. We provided an opportunity for all of our employees to provide comments and input and to participate. We had stakeholder input and comments that we received from all of our city managers, from our city council members, from our Fire Advisory Commission members, from all the board of supervisors, and as well the county administrator. It's a ten-year plan. We identified a vision as we will be the premier adaptive, collective, inclusive, and innovative organization, always prepared to meet the needs and expectations of our evolving organizations. In our mission, we will provide the highest level of service to our communities by valuing our employees, promoting positive leadership, and dedicating ourselves to excellence. Our strategic plan is made up of five goals. I have one of those at your desk as well, and I'd be honored for you to be able to keep that and have it as something from the organization. The five goals indicate our targets for what we're going to be doing and what we're going to be dedicating ourselves to over the next ten years. Goal one is fiscal sustainability. Goal two, an organization closely aligned with community values, needs, and service expectations. Goal three, service and resources to meet the mission. Goal four, sustain organizational viability and vitality, and that includes things like effective policies and procedure, emphasis on employee health and wellness, and personal and professional growth and development. And goal five is improved organizational systems and processes. We've been rolling this strategic plan out to our employees, providing assignments for each of our managers, their program managers, prioritizing the strategies and the priorities within the strategic plan, ask all of our managers to integrate it into their work plan, and we're developing budget proposals to move this forward. I will say that it's an honor to be here tonight. It's an honor to be able to present you our strategic plan. We have been honored to serve the community of Emeryville since two thousand twelve, and I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be able to present to you tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief McDonald. Take public comment first. Are there any members of the public who would like to give comment for item twelve point one? Recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes, please.
We've heard fifteen minutes of pure government propaganda. Now let's hear from a fire hose of truth. The uncomfortable truth. So back in April of two thousand twenty, I went to the Station House Thirty-five Alameda County Fire Department to make a complaint about the fire door being blocked at the pharmacy on San Pablo Avenue, the now shuttered pharmacy, the CVS Pharmacy, because my written and phone complaints were not being listened to by the Alameda County Fire Department. So I went in person, and I saw in the side yard about fifteen firefighters working shoulder to shoulder, right next to each other, in each other's faces, within inches of each other. None of them were wearing masks, and this was during the height of the Alameda County emergency order, COVID emergency order, order. None of them were wearing masks. So I made a complaint, and what I got from the firefighters on, at the scene was like right up in my face with hostility, including profanity, from these firefighters. All I asked them to was, you need to put your masks on, and then that's how they responded. So I made a complaint at the Alameda County Fire Department, and I never heard back. There is no internal investigation. They would not respond at all. So we spent a hundred and eighty-six million dollars, that's the budget for the Fire Department, I guess for Emeryville's share, and what do we get for that? What kind of value do we get for that? That's what we get. Ignoring the emergency COVID order, and then in my face, within closer than six feet, within one foot of my face, with fuselage of profanity, and then there's the matter of CVS Pharmacy, which was open for about ten years. During the entire time...
Thank you for your comment.
...was never, was never open. The emergency fire door, Alameda County Fire Department couldn't handle it.
Madam Clerk. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to give comment for item twelve point one? Okay, seeing none. Are there council members who have questions or comments for the fire chief? Councilmember Mora.
Just briefly, I wanted to thank you for your service to the city. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, councilmember.
Councilmember Pryforce.
I just want to say thank you for, yeah, for your leadership, for your diversity, and for your strength. You know, we benefit so greatly in Emeryville by your service, and so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Hi, Chief. I just wanted to thank you and your team for your service, as I have had to make numerous emergency calls to my home. Your team has always displayed the utmost professionalism and care and empathy for situations that can many times be very stressful, very frightening. They've always responded and brought an air of calm to often what is a very scary situation. And so just want to thank you and your team, many of who are here today, and just keep up the great work. Thank you for your service to Emeryville.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, firefighters. You are actually heroes, and I echo a lot of the comments from my colleagues. Thank you so much. Very much appreciated.
Thank you so much, councilmember. Thank you all very much.
I just want to, it's gonna sound very similar, I want to say thank you, but I want to say thank you not just for the professional service that the men and women of the Alameda County Fire Department provide in their capacity as agents of public safety for our community, but also being part of our community and participating in the lifeblood of the city. I want to give a very special commendation to Chief Randall West, who I've had the benefit of knowing for close to ten years now, and who has really ingratiated himself into the work of our schools, our young people, and our community and our staff, and he's an exemplary leader and a person who really stands out when I think about what makes Emeryville great. And so I just want to commend you, Chief, for employing the best among us, and then for being so kind as to appoint them to stations here in our city. So with that, thank you to all of you who came out this evening, and thank you for your service to our city.
Thank you so much, Mayor Bauders.
You're welcome. Item twelve point two is an introduction and a first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, repealing and replacing various municipal code provisions to eliminate or modify criminal penalties for code violations identified as Group One amendments, repealing and replacing Chapter fourteen related to sandblasting of Title Eight of Building Regulations, Chapter one Planning Regulations, General Provisions of Title Nine Planning Regulations, to correct typographical errors or inconsistencies, and repealing Chapter sixteen related to pawnbrokers, secondhand jewelry dealers, and auction sales of Title Five under public welfare and its entirety. Mr. Kennedy, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. We have outside counsel who will be presenting PowerPoint going through the various aspects of this ordinance. So I'm gonna, at this point, turn it over to Margaret Kotsebu.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and welcome, Margaret.
Good evening. Checking to see if you can hear me, because I don't see myself on the screen yet.
Yeah, you won't see your face on the screen because you're a participant from the attendee list, but we can hear you loud and clear, and we're welcoming you this evening.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. So, yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Margaret Kotsebu, and I'm special counsel with Jarvis Fay Law Firm. And I'm here tonight to present an item that is part of the city's ongoing process to decriminalize its municipal code. Next slide, please. So I thought I'd give some background of how we got here. These slides may look familiar to you. But by way of background, the city's existing code includes criminal, civil, and administrative penalties used to enforce its provisions of the municipal code. In terms of criminal penalties, the city has infractions and misdemeanors available. And there's also a separate chapter in the municipal code that provides that any violations of a code may be subject to administrative citation. The city may also institute civil actions, including nuisance proceedings, or can withhold permits and licenses. So those would be administrative penalties and civil penalties as opposed to criminal penalties. Next slide, please. So in two thousand twenty, recognizing that some criminal penalties could be used disproportionately to impact people of color, the City Council requested that staff look at how the city's code could be decriminalized and held several meetings, as noted here, in reviewing and discussing alternative penalties. Next slide, please. And that culminated on a meeting in December fifteenth, two thousand twenty, where the council undertook an extensive review of each code section that was identified by the City Attorney's Office at the time and provided direction on appropriate remedies. And the recommendations that were made to council are attached as Attachment B to your staff report, and that's a chart that lists the individual penalties and what the council directed. And as a first step in the process, on December twelfth of last year, the City Council approved an ordinance to amend the penalty charts that are included in the municipal code. These penalty charts provide which code violations are subject to either infractions or misdemeanors. And what staff did was, as the first step, cleaned up these penalty charts and made them consistent with the council's recommendations back in December of two thousand twenty. And at that time, it was anticipated that staff would bring back further amendments to the code for council's approval, and that's what we're doing here tonight. Next slide, please. So we looked at the number of code provisions. We wanted to bring the code consistent with the penalty charts, and we also, there were other amendments that were discussed before the council. So we decided to group them into three different groups: Group One, Group Two, and Group Three. And tonight, we're reviewing the Group One amendments. And these are the cleanup amendments to thirty-five chapters in the municipal code to bring them into compliance with the council's recommendations and the penalty charts. It's anticipated we'll come back later with the Group Two and Group Three amendments. These code amendments will need further review either by council subcommittee or in study session, or reviewed by staff and legal analysis made. And I'll touch on the Group Two and Group Three later on in my presentation. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, I wanted to just bring up the revised penalty charts. I'm not sure if you could read them. They're probably pretty small. On the left are the misdemeanors, and the right are the infractions. And so currently, as it stands, these are the only code sections in the code that are subject to any criminal penalty as of the current date. Next slide, please. And here's a list of the Group One amendments. As I said, there's many of them, and I've listed them here. They're also listed in your staff report. But these are the cleanup amendments that we're making tonight to make it consistent and to do the simple amendments that we anticipate. Again, there's a summary of all of these changes that are included in your Attachment C to your staff report, and that's a chart, and it summarizes all of the different changes that we're proposing tonight to the individual chapters. Next slide, please. So realizing that we wouldn't want to go over all of the code sections tonight, because that would take a long time, what I thought it would be helpful is to show an example... an example of one code section that we recommended changes, and this is going to be similar to what we've done with the other chapters. So what we noticed is that when there was a discussion of whether something, uh, someone was violating the code, a lot of the provisions in the code said it was unlawful. So for instance, um, in Emeryville, uh, in order to conduct a farmer's market, you need to have a business license and you also need to have a permit from the police department. And as written now, um, the code states that it's unlawful to operate. And while unlawful can also mean a civil penalty, we thought it had a criminal context, so we thought that language should be removed. So we changed it. So instead of unlawful, we changed this language whenever we saw the word unlawful to a violation of the Emery Municipal, Emeryville Municipal Code. Next slide, please. Um, also, whenever there was a penalty provision, um, in the code, we changed it. So this is again, the farmer's market ordinance. Um, here, previously, a violation of the chapter was deemed to be an infraction. That was changed with the penalty charts and subject to the, the council's decision. So we changed it, so saying any violation of this chapter is now subject to administrative citation under chapter seven of Title One of your code. Again, I refer to the attachment C. This lists all of the cleanup amendments that we've made, but this, I just wanted to give an example, um, of, of the type of amendments that we're making. Next slide, please. So, um, when we were looking at the code, we found some typos and cleanup, um, amendments that aren't related to the penalty provisions, but thought we would include them also. There was a typo in the sandblasting. You have to have permission if you want to do sandblasting at a time that's not regulated. And there was just a typo on the cross-reference, so we corrected that. And the planning regulations of EMC nine dash one three oh one, these include a list of other municipal code sections that relate to planning matters. A few of the ordinances had been repealed, in fact, had been repealed at the previous council meeting where we, we do, um, change the penalty charts, um, the fortune telling, and then chapter sixteen, as I'll mention below. So we've, um, recommended changing that and taking, um, or removing reference to those repealed ordinances. And then when we were looking at chapter sixteen of Title Five, which is the ordinance on pawnbrokers, secondhand jewelry dealers, and auction sales, um, we looked at this and staff determined that the regulations are antiquated and no longer enforced. There were provisions talking about, um, whether you had to have a permit, you had to maintain merchandise for a certain amount of time, and there were hours of operations. And we determined that we were no longer enforcing this. So staff recommends repealing this chapter in its entirety. Uh, next slide, please. So I wanted to go back to the group two and group three amendments. And again, we may change this, we may bring them all back. It just kind of depends on, on the complexity of each of these. So these are the remainder of the amendments that we would bring back to the council. Um, the group two amendments would be reviewed by subcommittee and it's noted there in your slide. And then the group three amendments, uh, a few of them would be discussed within the context. It's my understanding you've recently hired a code enforcement officer position or, uh, hired a code enforcement officer. And then there are also amendments in group three where we've looked at them, but we need to look at them to determine whether or not the law may preempt the city from removing penalties. These would be your building code, um, electric code, mechanical code, or, uh, regulation of firearms dealers. Those things we, the city may be preempted in changing the penalties, uh, as drafted. And it, we, um, as I said, we plan on coming back probably in spring of twenty twenty-four with some form of the group two, group three, um, amendments. Next slide, please. So in summary, um, staff recommends that the City Council waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance repealing and replacing various municipal code provisions to eliminate or modify criminal penalties, um, identified as a group one amendments, repealing and replacing the typos, the sandblasting, and the, the planning regulations, um, uh, code, and repealing chapter sixteen, the pawnbroker, secondhand jewelry dealers, and auction sales of Title Five in its entirety. And that concludes my, um, presentation and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Are there any clarifying questions from members of the council? Okay, we'll turn to public comment. Members of the public who wish to give comment on item twelve point two will have two minutes to do so. Are there any people here present who wish to give comment? And do we have any hands raised online, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor Brian Donahue.
Okay, please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
Well, as the five of you should like, you need to have like, you know, the capacity to have like a bullshit alarm. So for the purposes of what you're talking about right now. So you need to be able to enforce, if you're going to have laws or provisions, you need, they need to be enforceable, of course, fairly inequitably, of course. That's a problem Emeryville has repeated, the fair inequitability part. But you, they need to be enforceable. Like, so for instance, in the past, there was a law that said that citizens at pu- public comment sections of public meetings, including council meetings, could not address, uh, a specific council member, uh, and instead had to address the five council members and they had to speak quote on topic. There's all kinds of rules that are clearly unconstitutional. And so I, I challenged then Mayor Ruth Atkins. I just, I, she lowered the gavel, dropped the gavel on me for speaking about something not out of context or something, and I said, it's up to me to decide that. And furthermore, I'm, I'm addressing the council, the mayor, Ruth Atkins, specifically not the five council members. She cried foul, said it was a violation of the, of the law. And I said, well, what are you going to do about it? I'm, I'm standing here, you can have me arrested. Are you going to do it? And she wouldn't do it. So that tells you right there that that's not enforceable. So that, that's like where your bullshit alarm should go off, where, where, where if somebody challenges you, if you won't enforce and send, and do the proper enforcement, then you know it's, you should strike it. That's how you guys should move forward with modifying our, our municipal code, in my, my opinion. Thank you.
Give your comment. Other members of the public who wish to comment on item twelve point two? Do we receive any written comments?
No, Mayor.
Comment is closed. This time I'll turn to members. Is there any member who wishes to discuss? I just want to thank Margaret and, uh, the City Attorney's Office. Uh, this is a significant undertaking. It presents, uh, kind of streamlined, but, um, the fact that it's taken us three years is not because of lack of effort. It's because of the significance with which we have addressed this issue. It's incumbent upon municipalities to periodically, uh, review their code. We found, uh, with the amendments we made last year, we found lots of inappropriate or inaccurate cross-references, citations to things that didn't even exist anymore. As was mentioned, we eliminated entire chapters for arcane things like regulating fortune telling, um, you know, but also we did this because we were trying to refocus the city's police and public safety resources onto, um, issues of importance to the public as it relates to their actual safety and reduce the reasons for, um, you know, unnecessary stops, uh, and just things that don't belong in the code. It was a, it was a crime to spit on the sidewalk in the code. It was a crime to spit gum, uh, to not pick up dog poop. Those were things in the code that the council just looked at as like, what are the, what are the reasons for these things? If you looked at them, most of them were enacted in the late sixties through mid seventies, which told you a little bit about what the mindset might have been for people at the time. Um, and they're just not a reflection of the city's values nor its public safety priorities. And we don't need to ask our police officers to regulate those types of behaviors. So I want to, you know, thank the, the legal team that did the work to not only put the chart in place that we adopted last year, but to do the cleanup work that we have before us tonight, recognizing that we have a, we have a series of, uh, significant items that will come in the springtime and really hope that we can take up those group two and three amendments in the springtime that are more substantive in discussion. But just again, appreciative of all the time, especially to you, Margaret, for the time you've put on this. Um, with that, I'll make a motion to read this ordinance by title only.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion by the mayor and a second by the vice mayor to read this ordinance by title only. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just give me one minute to pull up the ordinance. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville repealing and replacing various municipal code provisions to eliminate or modify criminal penalties for code violations identified as group one amendments, repealing and replacing chapter fourteen, sandblasting of Title Eight Building Regulations, and chapter one Planning Regulations, General Provisions of Title Nine Planning Regulations, to correct typographical errors or inconsistencies, and repealing chapter sixteen, pawnbrokers, secondhand jewelry dealers, and auction sales of Title Five Public Welfare in its entirety.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the title for this ordinance having been waived in, at first reading and read by the City Attorney, um, is there anyone who wishes to discuss the ordinance further? I make a motion to approve, uh, all of the actions, um, encumbered under item twelve point two.
I second.
Thank you. Motion, Bowers, second Welch to approve twelve point two. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you very much. That's approved. That'll take us to item twelve point three, which is consideration of a travel authorization for Councilmember Pryforce. Councilmember Pryforce, it's your presentation.
Uh, I don't have a presentation to provide. I'm sorry.
It's, it's, there's no staff presentation, right?
There's not a staff presentation. I would just refer people to the report that's in the packet.
So it's your opportunity before public comment to just tell us the purpose for the request and what you're asking for.
Uh, that, that would be a request to attend the National League of Cities. I am a member, representative of the, um, City of Emeryville for, uh, the state, uh, League of Cities, uh, and, um, so mostly those who will be attending, uh, I am familiar with and they extended that invitation, uh, to me. And so, uh, so yeah, so I would be attending their, uh, I believe, national conference in Atlanta in November. And, um, and yeah, so, um, that's, uh, the presentation.
Are you asking for anything specific, like just registration? Are you also asking for airfare and hotel?
Yes, uh, based on the, uh, agenda item that I requested, uh, at the last meeting, it would be for, um, it would, yeah, it would be for, was it lodging, travel, and, uh, yeah, and conference registration. So, uh, similar to, uh, when I go to Sacramento for the, um, for the League of Cities, uh, events. Thanks.
Okay, are there any questions for Councilmember Pryforce before I call for public comment? Councilmember Mora?
How much are we talking about? Is there a dollar amount?
Uh, that I don't know. I think that was in the report, uh, by the city.
We don't have a dollar amount yet because none of those tickets have been purchased or the registration confirmed, but there are, uh, administrative policies that regulate the maximum amounts that are available for this kind of event, so you'd have to follow those.
Have you been provided a copy of the reimbursement, uh, manual?
Reimbursement manual for this event or just in general?
For Art City policy.
Uh, I believe so, for, um, the last, uh, event. Yes.
Okay. Uh, we'll take public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on item twelve point three will have two minutes to give comment. Is there any person here present who wishes to give comment? Seeing none, there's a hand raised online. Please, please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
Okay, what I expect to happen here is for Councilmember Pryforce to be treated fairly inequitably and treated at least as well as other council members are treated with regard to what is, what he's requesting of the city. I don't think he should be treated better, but I certainly, he should not be treated worse. And there is a long precedence of council members asking for and receiving tra- travel, uh, uh, resources to representing the city. And so I'm going to be watching this and I, like I said, I'm, I know that there's at least two council members that have expressed a lot of hostility towards Councilmember Pryforce. That would be, of course, Mayor Bowers and Vice Mayor, uh, Welsh. But I, it's, for purposes of this, this request, I expect you to not behave childishly and I expect you to treat this council member as an equal and with, with complete transparency and openness, and I expect it to be fair and equitable. I'll be watching. Thank you.
Any other members of the public who wish to comment on item twelve point three? Okay, seeing none, is there any discussion from members? Member Carr?
Actually, I was pointing to.
Member Mora?
Um, I, I don't necessarily think it's a great use of time to discuss requests like this as they come up. I don't, I don't think, um, Councilmember Pryforce should necessarily have to come before the council, uh, every time one of these opportunities come up. Um, I, I think it makes a lot more sense to have kind of a blanket policy and including a, a dollar amount. And I, I know our budget is eight thousand dollars, uh, if that's for the, the full council. Uh, if we divide that by five, that's sixteen hundred dollars, uh, per person. So I, I think it makes sense to kind of have a dollar value, uh, that, uh, you know, complies, individual items should comply with the travel policy, but then that dollar value would then fall to the discretion of each council member, uh, in which, which events they attend and how they, uh, spend that allowance.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes, is that the, I, I wasn't sure about the eight thousand. Is it for the entire council?
Yes.
Yeah, in that case, that's very fair and equitable. And I agree that this is not a request that, uh, needs to come before the council every time it is made. Uh, we should probably have that policy, but I welcome the other comments from the more experienced members on this.
Vice Mayor Welch?
I actually have a question for Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Kennedy, is, would we have to change that as a council? Would we have to implement an ordinance or is that something that can happen at the staff level where we are just allocated sixteen hundred dollars each and you can apply it for certain things? So you attend whatever event you want to attend and then you submit your receipts? And if they are, fall under the purview of being able to be reimbursed, you have up to sixteen hundred dollars? Or how could we implement that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Welch. Uh, there is a council policy, I believe, that was adopted by the City Council. It's council policy number three that has to do with reimbursement for approved travel and other expenses for council members, commissioners, and committee members. I believe that policy would need to be amended, uh, per your direction. Can certainly bring that back at a future date, um, with the amendments that you seek and have the council adopt that as their policy at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I was on, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, I would, uh, I would say I'm, I'm supportive of, uh, the request. I think what I'd like to do at the other discussion, I'd like to ask if there's support to refer the policy for work to the Budget Governance Committee. We have a meeting in December. It can just be agendted as something to draft up at the meeting and then we can bring it to the council. So that seems reasonable. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize, uh, conference registration for Councilmember Pryforce. The conference is the sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth, so, um, whether that means arriving or departing on one of those days, I'd like to authorize three nights of, um, lodging as well as, uh, airfare that complies with the city policy and a local transportation and meals reimbursement that's compliant with the city policy. That's my motion.
I will second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Member Pryforce?
I just want to say thank you to, uh, to the mayor, uh, to the vice mayor, and to my councilmember colleagues.
You're welcome. There's a motion by Mayor Bowers and a second by Vice Mayor Welch.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so what you are requesting is for this item to go or has this been authorized for member Pryforce?
I just made a motion to approve.
Oh, I see. To approve the entire expense. The question I have is to do with the League of Cities that Councilmember, uh, Pryforce just attended. Was that part of his duties?
That was California League of Cities? And so that was a, um, as a member city, we have always, because he's performing a function on our behalf, whoever's the representative. have always, because he's performing a function on our behalf, whoever is the representative, the trip to Sacramento or Long Beach as it rotates is an approved regular annual expense, it does not require council approval to do that. This is different, this is attending a national conference, you know, to the discussion about letting people just attend, there's a balance to be had between just letting people go to everything, right? There's plenty of things we could go to and rack up a very pretty bill, but I think that the request to like, equitably, you know, hand out a certain amount of money for these discretionary things is reasonable, and since there is money available in the budget this year that hasn't been expended, I'm, I'm supportive of this and making a recommendation to approve this request.
I have a further question in that case. Now that we are, the city of Emeryville is a member of the National League of Cities, and Councilmember Pryforce is on that...
He's on the state one, the Cal Cities.
I see. So, since we are members, shouldn't we have a member from the council as, to be, to have that duty, to distribute that duty to that?
My understanding is there isn't a designee, and that actually, our membership authorizes any of us to go at any time to a conference, so to Councilmember Mora's suggestion, if there was, you know, they have three or four of these events throughout the year, there's different events, so if there was one in the spring, and you, for example, wanted to attend that, you could make a similar request to attend that, and the membership would apply to all of us. There's not a designee, because we're not in a voting capacity like we are at Cal Cities where we vote on resolutions and things.
Understood. Thank you so much. So, if it's not, I just wanted to make that distinction, if it's not a duty of one of the members to be there, then yes, it's the discretionary expense, understood.
Exactly, this is discretionary.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other debate on the motion? Motion, Bauders, second Welch, to authorize travel as described in the motion, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Can I, am I allowed to vote?
Yes.
Okay, aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders?
Aye. Okay, that's approved. Turn to item thirteen, which is Department head reports.
Good evening, Chad Smalley, Community Development Director, reporting on Planning Commission actions taken at the September twenty-eighth meeting. Both Chair Gitzoni and Vice Chair Dram were absent for this meeting, but we did have a quorum of five in the membership of the commission elected. Commissioner Martinez is interim chair for the meeting. The four-unit replacement project, twelve seventy-one sixty-fourth Street, a request to modify a condition of approval to reduce or waive a penalty fee. The commission held a public hearing and moved unanimously to recommend that the city council uphold the original conditions of approval. That is scheduled for a city council public hearing on November seventh. The other agenda item, the objective standards, public hearing and adoption was continued to the meeting of October nineteenth, and pending the commission's recommendation on that item, it is scheduled for city council in, on November twenty-first. That concludes my report, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. These items are both on future agendas, are there any questions that people have for Director Smalley? Okay, seeing and hearing none, future agenda item request, are there members who have a future agenda item request? We'll start on my left.
No, it was going to be that, but we are forwarding to budget and governance, so...
The policy is coming to budget governance, any, any future agenda request here, there? Go ahead.
So, I don't know if it's on the, on the budget and governance agenda, but I'd like to request the formation of an independent ethics commission to follow on our, on the, on the approval of the Code of Ethics at our last meeting.
Is there interest in discussing a Code of Ethics commission? Okay, there's not majority support for that. Do you have other requests?
I'll do the pledge allegiance after.
Okay, I have a couple requests. The first is that the city is in a unique position to, I'm going to ask to bring a travel item to the next agenda to conduct official city business. The city is finishing the Quiet Zone project, and will be putting in its application for, or the rail safety project, putting in the application for the Quiet Zone. Simultaneously, the city is also trying to secure a reconnecting communities grant, and there is a application that is pending, and I have been offered the opportunity to meet with the Federal Department of Transportation to present on those items, to put us in the best possible position to secure the funding and the Quiet Zone, and would like to ask council support to discuss authorizing brief travel for me to do that. So, is there a support to allow me to put that on the next agenda? Okay, there's majority support to do that. And then, I would like to also have a future agenda item that would be a study session, I imagine, but would probably ultimately be referred to the Planning Commission. I would like us to look at the planning regulations as it relates to eligible uses in the planning regulations, and I would like to have a discussion about amending the eligible uses. We've done that in the past to prohibit new crematoriums from opening in Emeryville as an air, air quality safety issue, that was an item we did, but I'm looking to have a discussion about de-emphasizing auto-centric uses, including the formation of new gas stations, car washes, and auto dealerships in the city, as well as eliminating the potential for, and this isn't going to change anything that's already here, but for future, as well as storage units and facilities. Is there support to have a discussion about planning related to that? Okay, there's a willingness to do that, so we'll have a study session at some point later this year on that. And now, I'll go back to Councilmember Pryforce.
So, I'd like to place on a future agenda item the recitation of the pledge of allegiance at our council meetings, and I will demonstrate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. The time, Madam Clerk, is eight thirty-six. Meeting is adjourned.